Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to open the special meeting of Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. We start with.
Let's just. The United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're waiting on the selection straighten, but we can look for them. Go ahead and start with correspondence. There usually mention, or can I just mention what we received?
You can mention that.
Okay, so I did receive correspondence to the first selectmen of the board of selectmen today. Had a conversation this morning with Paula Antalini. And it was in regards to the agenda with respect to the ARPA funds that we have on the agenda. There were, there were a couple of things. One was about the turf field, feeling that doing the lights out of our funds was not really what we should be doing. And that we should be looking maybe in the future at, here he is. We should be looking at possibly, you know, more pandemic costs if we have research into pandemics and holding funds in reserve for that. Also, some talk about, or some questions about how we noticed the meeting, which I want to address. When we noticed the meeting, well, it was improperly noticed for the regular meeting. We have a new person in the office. So at that point, we had two choices. We either just run with the meeting that wasn't hybrid. Or go ahead and redo it as a special meeting and do a hybrid meeting. So in interest of transparency, we wanted everybody to be able to come on hybrid, you know, that was more important. So the problem was from her perspective, this is a public comment, which is why we have correspondence. So that's, that's kind of what I decided to make. So I wanted to put that out there to, to the public. And you have correspondence, which I just gave them, I just kind of explained. Move from there. First election's report. Obviously very informal, but here we can have. Sat down day one, and I'll tell you this, we have a lot of great people in the building and across the town who are town employees. It made me feel very welcome. There's no question that people are on top of their jobs, on top of their game. So I felt really great about it, even the first week. At the end of the week, we had a transformer blowout. I don't know who knows or doesn't know. We had a transformer blowout behind the municipal center. And, you know, within, I don't know, 20 to 30 minutes, we had a resource on the scene because of the good work of the maintenance folks. We actually had people coming and looking at the boilers all weekend. Gets me out of all kinds of issues. But one thing I learned is the town employees were on top of it and also internet. It was fried at the moment. Our IT folks did a wonderful job getting that back online. So all in all, it was a adventurous first week and a half. And we're happy to be here and I'll, I'll have more detailed reports in the future. So we're moving on to consideration of the regular minutes of January 3rd. Do I have a motion to approve minutes? Any discussion?
We both, we both. Stick to account.
Okay, so seeing no discussion, put up for a, for a vote, all in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstentions, I will abstain because I wasn't present. Next item up is consideration of the special meeting minutes of January 12th, 2023. And a motion to accept the minutes.
Sorry. Just want to make sure I was there.
Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, can I have a vote for approval of the minutes from January 12th, 2023?
I.
Pose, abstentions, I wasn't there. And I have a motion to her consideration of the special meeting minutes of January. I messed this up when I do 12th.
You're after.
We're on the night.
Okay. We did 23, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Consideration of special meetings of February 9th, 2023.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we need to do 23rd. I said 23rd, this is the 12th. Okay, perfect. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the meetings of the, excuse me, the minutes of the special meeting from January 23rd, 2023.
So second.
Have a vote to accept minutes? All favor, opposed, I've abstaining, I wasn't there. Like a motion to accept the special meeting minutes of February 9th, 2023. And any discussion? I was there. First day of the job. Any discussion? Seeing none, can I have a vote to approve the minutes?
Yes.
I, motion carries. And I have a motion to accept the special joint meeting minutes of February 9th, 2023. I flipped over myself, nothing. All three boards, any discussion? Seeing none, can I have a vote to, I'd like to vote to approve the minutes of a special joint meetings of a January 9th, 2023. All favor, I, opposed, motion carries. Like a motion to for the consideration to approve the special joint meeting minutes of February 14th, 2023.
So second.
Any discussion? Okay, I have a vote to approve the.
Eyes.
All favor, I. Motion carries. All right. Now we're on to the business. Okay, first word of business is consideration of tax refunds, an amount of $17,410.74. And these are a result of overpayment of taxes. They have a motion to accept the tax refund.
So second.
And I don't think really a discussion. All in favor of authorizing the refunds, the amount of $17,410.74? All favor?
I.
I, motion carries. The next order of business, we have to have an appointment for the, who's, who's the town resources recovery authority, HRA, for the membership. We have one member and one alternate. Normally it's the first selectman who is the member. And sometimes the one, the other second can be the one as the alternate. I'd like, well, we need a motion.
I make a motion to make Dan Carter a permanent member and Richie, if you want, do you want to be the alternate?
Sure.
Selectman straight into the video.
Okay, so all in favor of Dan Carter becoming the member and Mr. Straighten the alternate?
I.
I. Oppose motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We realize this individually, right, for appointments? All right, so we have a list of appointments available for different missions, so I'm going to go ahead and make the motions for each one. And just kind of make it simple. First up is a commission on aging. We have one appointment available. I'd like to nominate Justin Lewis of 12 Star Lane. Any other appointments, nominations? Sorry.
That was, that was important.
That is a. We have a. I mean, I have the benefit of having the letter. You don't have the letter in your report?
No.
Okay, this is a letter that was supplied to the Democratic Town Committee. Yeah, obviously, by, by order, if you want to put in, you know, nominations, you certainly do so. Right now, we're nominating Justin Lewis. We have a second.
Okay.
Can, can you designate what party they're from? Because.
Of course, so Justin Lewis is Republican. The, the person leaving board is Diane Golden.
So to replace.
It's replaced. Yeah, okay. I'll make that clear as well.
Okay.
Make a motion.
So, so I think, yes, I'd like to, to vote in motion. All in favor?
I.
I. Oppose. None of the questions. The next appointment is on the Economic Development Commission. The current person leaving is a Republican, Jay Streamman. And I'd like to, excuse me, John Streamman, official name. I'd like to make a motion that we keep, or reappoint John Streamman of 18 Colonial Drive to the Economic Development Commission.
Excellent, his term expires.
Term expired.
I thought you said.
He's expiring. Okay, so all in favor of John Streamman of being reappointed to the Economic Development Commission?
I.
I, opposed. Okay, so next up, we have the Ethics Commission. There are four terms that are expiring. We have in this case, we have two Republicans who I'd like to nominate for the positions. And that would be Stephen Duchelle to be reappointed to the board and also Fran Pulling, the appointed to the board. Preferably the position of guest of Janice Patzold. And then by their standards, we have two Democrat spots. In communication with the party, they recommended Patricia Orsino and Jenny Tsar.
Tess.
Tess, okay, that's who was recommended by the party. So can I?
And wasn't it?
Right, so but of course, we have an opportunity. So we have three Democrats.
Right, but out of the three Democrats that we could appoint to, correct?
You can port it. Yeah, and, and I just, it's kind of up to you, you want to put another name forward. I spoke to the party chair, that's kind of.
Okay, you talked to.
I did.
Dan.
On that. Nick. Nick, yeah. It's important to have that input, so I guess we'll do these, we can do these as a one block appointment. So what I'll do is, I would like to make a motion that we appoint, or it'll be reappointment for Stephen Duchelle. It'll be a reappointment for Patricia Orsino, a reappointment for Jenny Tsar. And the first time appointment for Francis Poole to the Ethics Commission. Sorry. Any more discussion? All in favor?
I.
I, opposed. Motion carries. We have one appointment to the Housing Authority. Republican Marilyn D'Amico would like to be reappointed for term expired. So I make a motion that we reappoint Republican Marilyn D'Amico to the Housing Authority. In this question.
Just.
Yeah.
There was no other.
So.
Appointments there.
No, just, we just have the one. Yeah, and actually I can share that. Do this, we go through, that's.
Okay.
These are. All in favor? Oppose, none pushing. Next one is the Insurance and Pension Commission. We have two vacancies. We have a vacancy and a term expiring. I would make a motion that we appoint Robert Kostrowski and reappoint Edward Tomasco to the Insurance and Pension Commission. So they're both Republicans.
There should be one more opening. I think Ken Kopeck's terminated.
Yeah. His.
Chairman's 2025.
According to this, it's 2025, yeah.
Oh, I thought it was the website.
Said he started in 21. 25. You can take me to that next meeting, just. Okay, so, so the motion forward is to appoint Robert Kostrowski and Edward Tomasco.
Experience in finances.
Okay, guys. All in favor?
I.
I. Pose. Motion carries. Okay, so Public Site Building Commission, there was a vacancy back in December, it looks like, from Gino Guiteri. I make a motion to point Joshua Adams, 25 Brand Street, to the Public Site Building Commission.
I concur with that. Josh is very knowledgeable. Unfortunately, he moved away, now he moved back to town. He was a great asset to the town and the building site committee with the school renovations, so well qualified person.
Were there any on your list for Public Site Commission?
No.
Okay, just keep in mind there, we could have set, we can have seven max, seven members, so that might be somewhere we want to recruit in the future. Yeah. And actually, we got two pages here. We also have Gary Regan, I'm sorry, another vacancy. I'd like to include, it's been my motion to include Gary Regan of 96 Nashville. So this is actually one, one, two, three, four, five.
For the public site.
For the public site, though, yep.
No, Gary was going in a different.
No, he's going.
Yeah.
On which one?
You.
You.
She went.
My bad.
From that.
Yeah. Well, it doesn't, it doesn't have any change, so I thought it was the next one. Okay, so we'll keep, keep the original, Josh Adams, 25 Brand Street.
Yeah.
All in favor?
I.
I, any opposed, non motion carries? So, next up is here we go. I got two pages. Except it's sustainable, but actually, there's nobody else sustainable, that's who's come forward yet. Yeah, just.
That's a whole.
Yeah.
Another issue. That commission was set up as seven people and tend to ended up on it. So technically, you only need the seven.
Okay.
To be appointed.
Right.
So a couple of people have resigned, so as long as there's still seven people there.
I think they're down to four.
Oh.
So.
More people.
We were needs more people, so just put that out there. Those watching, no, we don't fill today. There's nobody, nobody's putting anybody forward. No, we don't. In fact, there's seven max is what they're here, so. No, but I want to put it out there that they're, they're open. If people are interested out there, you know, let us know. That works. Okay, next up, Youth Commission. We have three appointments to Youth Commission. First, we have an expiring term. We'd like to, I'd like to nominate, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Jen Lewis of 12 Star Lane. Marie Muthersbaugh would be a reappointment for 16 Greenwood Avenue. And Gary Regan from 96 National Road. So this would be the three. So. Any discussion?
And, and they're, they're all.
Yep, they're all expiring terms. Actually, one has been, has expired back in '22, wasn't filled.
Okay.
And then the other expired in one January 23rd.
Excuse me, Dan, who is the second one to be reappointed?
The reappointment one would have been Marie Muthersbaugh. M U T H E R S B A U G H. Okay, so we had a motion in a second. All in favor?
I.
I, opposed, motion carries. Finally, we have the Youth Commission. That, that was a alternate, Youth Commission alternate, sorry. So we have two spots to fill, one damn bug Republican. I would make a motion that we appoint Joan Hislop of 5 Evergreen Drive. And Kelly Parides. I got the right, I don't have her address, but those would be the two on the. Any discussion? And those are, one's a Republican, one's a Democrat.
Those are all.
For the alternates, right?
That, that's the alternate, the two he gave you are the alternates, not the ones before.
Oh.
They're on the actual commission. These are alternates.
Right.
So no confusion.
All right, all in favor?
I.
Oppose. It is a long list. All right. Okay, next up, consideration of some of the ARPA funds. So the first one is a consideration of mobile radios, an amount of $163,510. And a license plate reader in the amount of $17,777 for the Bethel Police Department for a total of $181,287 from ARPA funds. Second.
Well, second.
Okay, so discussion.
Before we, Marty, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Hey, I can hear you.
Marty, just as we go down the list, if you have any issues saying it could be a misuse of ARPA funds, can you just chime in and say, you know, I know the police department, we're on good ground with that, but
Yeah.
Anything that you don't feel meets ARPA standards, just let us know, because I don't want to get the town into a audit situation where we misuse any funds.
We had some of those conversations earlier. Attorney and I will definitely bring those up, because we're going to talk about. Okay, well, obviously, this is a, this is police department, good use of ARPA funds. I think really the, the big problem with the mobile radios has been that at this point, if one of those radios goes down, we basically lose a car. They're not serviceable anymore, so that's why we brought them forth this way. Any special?
This wasn't carried in capital or anything?
It's been on the capital list for several years now. Pushed back a few times. The biggest issue was this recent letter we have, basically, they can't fix them anymore.
But I understand that it's a kind of a emergency type thing to get these radios up and running. But I'm concerned about taking up from the ARPA funds that it's not a capital item in the regular budget, and it's been carried into regular budgets for several years, correct? Several years since then.
Probably, probably, well, at least three or four years, we've had it projected out and we've pushed it back a couple of times.
Yeah.
Marty, are there any rules on supplanting of funds in ARPA? Do they talk about supplanting of funds at all?
I think there's some, but I know most of the ones that I've read have indicated that you can combine them with other funds or substitute. I, I think it's doable. I don't think, I think it's a situation where because it was one place sells, as long as it's not paid for twice, I don't think it's an issue.
I mean, it's, it's emergency services.
Yeah, you know. No, I'll, I'll support the motion, you know, I just. So I pulled the 2023 capital plan, so last year's, at the time, the chief was thinking he could replace them over four years to $21,021 a year. So it's $84,000 over four years. And I think now that they got to the point that they got way more expensive, then they just can't replace it anymore.
In a perfect world, it would make sense to stage them in, but we have the ARPA funds now.
Yeah.
You know, maybe we get a few more years out of them and stage them in when it starts time. You know, we, we're more careful about when we replace them and try and if you and me are still around at the point where we need radios, you know, maybe we could stage them in then, but I'll support the motion, so. And you're getting two plate readers, Steve, or?
Yes.
Yeah, it's two.
No, it's, I'm sorry, one.
Just dual.
And take the old one and reinstall it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it dual?
Yes.
Single?
No, both dual.
Oh, okay, nice. So dual, they have two readers, so front and back, so they can get cars coming out of it, cars going away from them. It's actually, we just had single, we didn't have those.
One, and we have one that's several years old that still works, we'll reinstall it.
Well, they're a great tool. Don't work through any works, so you can say whatever you want. I don't really care.
Okay, you guys are ready to vote on the motion? Right. Yep, I move, I move we use ARPA funds for the license plate readers and the mobile radios in the amount of $181,287.
I.
I propose push carries. Okay, so there, I'll go and I'll make the motion that we, oh, actually, let's just discuss. So let's talk about the turf field lighting and security means with its amount of estimated cost of $800,000 mark. I did have a conversation with town attorney on this earlier.
I think we need a motion.
We did motion.
So just, just say I'd like to open the discussion.
I move that we have a discussion on the turf field lighting. Set, all favor?
So.
I. Okay. Marty, you want to chime in?
Yeah, I'm here.
So we're looking at the $800,000 from ARPA funds for the turf field lighting.
Right. Uh. I have, I have some trepidation about using ARPA funds for this. As most of you know, there's three main categories that are designated, and they're pretty broad, and they cover a lot of things. But, you know, I'm not so sure that in this case, you know, usually anything with students or children, when it's, when it's health and safety, it's something that you could factor in. I'm not so sure lights on a field are going to qualify for that. And I think if you look under the regulations, or I should say the situations where they talk about improvements to parks, there's some questions about that, too, if you want included under the park. Talks about disadvantaged neighborhoods economically, and it's supposed to help, help out. And I just don't think that this kind of fits into the category. I mean, you've got replace lost public sector revenue, it's not that, support COVID-19, public health and economic response. Well, that's pretty broad. You may be able to get it under, but I'm not so sure it fits all the scenarios that they give you. And then provide pay for eligible workers performing essential work. That's not the situation here. And then invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And it's got nothing to do with any of our infrastructure. So I, I think it's a problem. I mean, that's my, that's my opinion from what I've read, and there's a lot of paperwork on it, a lot of paperwork.
Maybe it would make sense to table it and do some more research and reach out to Brad. Don't you have contacts with the people administering this?
It's hard, because it's the Federals, they will not give you any preapproval.
Not preapproval, but they could say that, yeah, I mean, that's in the spirit of our.
They have been very relaxed, they won't even like.
Well, we could try, can't we?
We can try, yeah.
So rather than just take it off the plate, I don't see if we can do a little more research on it.
I know that this is to prove $7.1 million for passive parks. So the state's using it for parks in our tree, for park state, to prove state parks.
Would we qualify for that, or that's just for their state parks?
Yeah, but you don't, excuse me for interrupting, but you don't know exactly what parks and what neighborhoods. I mean, I, I've got a couple of the papers here, and if you read here, it talks about disadvantaged neighborhoods. Disadvantaged neighborhoods, economically disadvantaged neighborhoods, you know, and I, I don't know what parks they're talking about. If they're talking about Beardsley Park, it's possible that they consider that in Bridgeport, and I'm not knocking them, a disadvantaged neighborhood because of where it's located. So I wouldn't compare it to the state. It doesn't say that you cannot use it for parks. It says that it should be used for areas where the neighborhoods are disadvantaged economically wise and otherwise. That's all it says. So I would have to examine each one of the parks that they're doing it for and where they're located. And I don't mind working with Brad with this. I'll talk to Brad.
I think we just table it.
Yeah, that's what I, I agree.
Not just next.
I want to throw something out there, too. There, there are some, right, right now, there's no definition of what economic disadvantage is in Connecticut, except for with the marijuana statutes right now. There are places in Bethel that certainly could be parts of town, perhaps. So, yeah, I would, I would take a motion to lay this on the table. And to come back to it more so.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I mean, don't.
The agenda March 7th.
Come back to it March 7th.
All right, so we, we have a, a, to lay on the table, all favor laying this consideration surf field on the table? I. Pose, none.
We, just in terms of the lights, though, you know, I do believe there were conversations before they started this project. And there was assurances that the, that the field would be lighted.
Yes.
So I just said, I really think we need to take that into consideration as we examine.
Yes.
This further, you know, that there was, there was a promise made to the donor. I didn't make it, but. For what's talks, so.
Right.
We just need to keep that in mind as we move forward.
Okay, so I make a motion, we consider the Port of Finance recommendation to take $128,810 from Department of Public Worth chassis for our funds, for the chassis. For our. All favor? To talk about it?
Yes.
All right, all favor? To talk about it, I'm really. For discussion.
We're talking, we're just talking about it.
Right, okay. We're not passing.
No.
Okay, so.
It's on your agenda, so it's.
Right.
So you can, you can make the motion to put it on the agenda and then.
Okay. So, yeah. Okay, so this was kicked back, this had gone to the Port of Finance with the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen.
Correct.
And then the Port of Finance has sent it back to us for consideration to our funds. There was also a discussion given to town attorney with this one, whether or not we could do this, so like to open up. Marty, you have some input here on the recommendation for the chassis?
Well, yeah, my first reading of it was, I, I thought that it probably didn't qualify. But it's possible with the very liberal interpretations that they have, where it talks about. But it's possible with the very liberal interpretations that they have, where it talks about. One of the things they include in there is is road construction and road maintenance. So if you want to make an argument that it's for road maintenance, you know, purposes, you might, you might, you could probably do it. But that's, it's still close, but I I can't.
Road maintenance, I mean, the truck is being used to maintain our roads, right?
Yes.
Well, that's, that's what I said. It does talk about maintenance. And I guess, like I said, there is a. Try to be a liberal interpretation. And if you, if you think of along those lines, then it probably would fit within there.
Well, I I disagree for this. For discussion, I I disagree. Again, this is a capital item that's been talked about. For for years to to expend these monies to normal operations of the highway department. I don't believe it should come from the ARCA funds, but that's my personal opinion. It it's normal business. Shouldn't be buying trucks from the ARCA funds that, in my opinion, our funds are for special. Consideration items. To spend $128,000 for a chassis of the truck. My opinion should not come from the ARCA funds. That's my opinion.
Well, we, we voted in favor of two police cars out of our funds and buy those every year. So I don't really see.
Over the thing was about buying the cars. Out of the ARCA funds too.
We voted on it though.
Yes, we did.
You know, I, I think that this does fall under road maintenance, in my opinion. I mean, the trucks are used to maintain the roads. I mean, plowing is maintaining the road. And it can't be snow covered. It could also go towards emergency services. If we can't get our police cars out, our fire cars out, our ambulance car, you know, our ambulance is out, that's a big problem. And, you know, I think the nice thing is, Richie, and my feelings are if it falls under ARPA. It frees up the capital non-recurring for things that doesn't fall under ARPA. Where we can possibly use some of that money for other things that the town may need. I mean, Marty already said that it doesn't matter if it's on the capital, you can use it. You know, there's no supplanted of funds. So I I think we're on good ground and I would support it.
And I I actually agree. I mean, there's, there's no question when it comes to public safety and maintenance of our roads, they're clear. They're clear areas we can use ARPA funds, so I think it does make sense. Any, any other further discussion? I make the motion then that we, we take $128,810 for Department of Public Works chassis from the ARPA funds. All in favor, actually, they second, sorry.
Well, I'll second it, but I don't think we can, we say instead of CNR, Brad, or is that Board of Finance?
Actually, you're right, that's.
I mean, I would just, I would just say that we're, we're approving the funds at ARPA. And then the Board of Finance can say that, because they didn't approve it.
Right.
The Board of Finance didn't approve it, so there's really no reason to even say not to take it from CNR because they didn't approve it.
I'll take that as, yeah, I'll take that as amendment to the motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
So what was the motion?
So the, so the motion is amended that we, the Board of, uh, we are taking $128,810. For the Department of Public Works purchase a chassis from our funds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Next up, uh, let's, let's just make the, I'm just gonna make the motion up for discussion. I'm making a motion that we take $45,591 for the highway garage generator from our funds. Oh, any second. Discussion.
Again, I don't believe the $45,000 should come out of the ARCA funds. This is something that's been on the capital plan for several years for replacing this generator.
Again, you know, we used ARPA funds to buy equipment for the fire department, for the police department. That's been in their capital plans. So respectfully. You know, I don't necessarily agree with that argument. And that's kind of like picking and choosing where we're gonna apply it. My only question to Marty is, does this, you know, in your opinion, is this something? Because I would have a question, does this fly with ARPA? That, that would be my question.
Well, I think it would fall under emergency services. So I think it would, it would be something you could pay for.
Alright, okay, that's all I need to hear.
Any further discussion? Okay, can I vote on the motion to take $45,591 for highway garage generation? Aye.
Opposed.
Next up, I'd like to make a motion that we approve up to $25,000 for a fire apparatus study. From our funds. Okay, so the, the genesis of this was, uh. We were speaking with the Fire Commission, Chair of Fire Commission, and that there's an opportunity for us to have a study done similar to what they did at Danbury. To have a little bit of, I'd say, insight as to where we should be placing our equipment and, you know, how often we should be replacing it. So this is a, this is a good way to kind of, you know, have somebody come in, look at it from a 30,000 foot view. And see what, you know, what would be the best for our town. Any more discussion?
Was this the, that he quoted, or was this what he was saying?
This is what they said it should be around. The Danbury study was 29,000. This is a much smaller scope. And they haven't gotten back to the actual number yet.
Well, why not just make it for an amount not to exceed 25,000?
And I'll say it that way. I'll correct it in a sec, because I said up to, and I should say not to.
Marty is, and I know I'm a broken record, I just don't want to see the town get into any trouble over this.
Yeah.
Is, is. Is a study about how many fire trucks we need covered under ARPA?
Well, to be honest with you. Yes, but I don't really know what the study's gonna be. I mean, is it gonna be not only how many fire trucks we need, but what kind of condition of the ones we have? What needs to be replaced, what can be repaired? I I don't know what it is. In most cases, it would be allowed.
Yeah, they did say that the study was supposed to tell us take in the condition of trucks, right? And kind of come up with, at least that's what I understood DJ was saying when he was here speaking to us, that. They kind of go through a comprehensive list of what you should do.
Yeah, I, I think it could fall under that.
Okay.
If there's a discussion, and I'll repeat the motion. I move we, we, we take 25 up to, excuse me, not to exceed $25,000. Uh, to prove a fire apparatus study from our funds. Like to vote on favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, see, now motion carries.
Just the first, just, just for the record, I, I know Brad is pretty good with the numbers. Where do we stand with the ARPA funds? What do we have left, you know, in the kitty, so to speak? After all the expenditures that you proved tonight, it would still be 3.1 million through next year, correct?
Might be closer to 2.85 as well, I guess. We'll see.
I show that 2.9. Hold on one second. So, uh, $2,923,695 approximately has been approved.
And is that taking the HVAC out, right?
Yes, so that's everything that the Board of Selectmen has approved so far. So that leaves $2,936. That includes the 855,000. Because prior to tonight, it was 2, 2,956. You approved.
Okay, so the 855 was covering the two.
Hold on, let me update, it's a little bit different.
Yeah, I just wanted to make.
Yeah. So, uh, it leaves 2,918 and change.
2,918.
Yeah.
Okay.
So almost exactly half of what's.
Just for.
Thank you.
Quick discussion. Does it make sense? At some point soon, we recess our meeting and we reconvene, is that okay with you, Richie? Because we have some stuff coming up that we gotta.
We, so the town labor attorney is upstairs because he's here for negotiations. We can have him in person, or we could have him remote in three hours or so when you get to him.
I'm here at 10 o'clock from the Board of Finance meeting shots, plus that's beside the point.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if, if.
What time do you finish up, you think?
Then on another negotiations.
I mean, I imagine our meeting will go to what, about nine?
My guess is the agenda looks like probably two and a half hours.
So 9:30? So I mean, if he wants to zoom to us, I just, it's just not doing justice for all these topics if we just.
I just didn't know if in the next couple minutes you wanted to try to clear that one, but it is executive, so you'd have to clear the room, you'd have to do all those things, so.
Yeah. So, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make the motion that recesses, it'll have to be. We are a scan of recess until we reconvene after the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
That we're going to end this meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, that will reconvene after that meeting. Yes, they want to come back, they can't.
So those on Zoom, I don't know if you've heard that, we have recessed the Board of Selectmen's special meeting. Uh, we have a 7:00 PM meeting, which is a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. So we'll reconvene the Board of Selectmen's special meeting after the next meeting. Okay, for those, uh, for those at home and here, we are back in our meeting, uh, out of recess. I'd like to start, we, where we left off of the agenda, with respect to the consideration discussion of Old Police Station, I'd like to lay that on the table for March 7th. I believe that requires a vote. And I have a motion, that's my motion to do that, lay it on the table, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, motion carries. With respection, uh, with respect to the Berks from Well, I think that's a very easy. Thing is, we're just looking at proving language, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, Marty's on there. Marty, looking at the Berks from Well, item L1.
Yes.
All we have to do is approve the resolution as written, correct?
It's correct.
Okay. So I, you guys all have the resolution in front of you, so you're fact it later, L1. I would like to make a motion that we approve the resolution for the Berks from Well. And I'll, I'll read it out, whereas by the townwide machine vote held on December 1st, 2022. In accordance with the Connecticut general statutes 7-7, following a special town meeting of November 17th, 2022. The Town of Bethel approved a resolution recommendation by the Public Utilities Commission. And approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to fund an amount not to exceed $12,297,057. For construction of a well water treatment plant for the project referred to and known as the Berks from Well and Water Treatment Plant Project. Said funding shall come from bonding, bond anticipatory notes, loans, temporary borrowing. And or other appropriation as recommended by the Comptroller to be reduced by any available grants obtained by the Town of Bethel. And or the Bethel Public Utilities Commission, if any. Payment for the appropriate sums shall be made by the water account users of the Bethel Public Utilities Commission. So, um, we have a second, I was a motion, all in favor of approving resolution as read? Aye, any opposed? None, motion carries. We just got the information regarding the HVAC from the high school. I believe this is time necessary. If, if it's okay, um, I'll make the motion to approve, and then we'll have somebody waiting from online here. So, um, I will make the motion to accept the two bids. One priced at $484,400 and the other bid was $997,420. A two award, I thought, yeah, I shouldn't say.
You don't want to accept both.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. I know, right? Okay, so we're, somebody made sure, or say this, yeah. We're going to award the bid of $484,400.
To the Catholic.
To the Catholic. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, so, uh, discussion, you want to hear from General?
Jen, uh, the, the base bid, that was a little bit confusing on that. So the, the Public Works Department reviewed all this?
Yes, so we had a meeting and, um, basically we felt comfortable awarding for ERU2 only. Which is the base bid. Uh, the remaining items in the bids, uh, which are labeled as alternates. Are mostly related to the HVAC grant and we haven't heard back on the grant yet. So we don't want to move on that until we know about the grant. And also there were some concerns about whether or not these two particular contractors could handle such a large project. Uh, but we did as a group feel comfortable with replacing ERU2. Because it is, it's pretty much just a swap out of an existing air handler that's broken on the high school roof. So, um, and the, so the new piece of equipment, we want to get the, that ordered as soon as possible. Because we're really hoping to do it over the summer so that we can, um, enable those classrooms that are serviced by this unit to become back online. Right now, there, there are science rooms and we can't do any, um, sort of chemical related experiments because there, there isn't enough ventilation.
Alright, so we're only doing the base bid, none of the alternates, is that correct?
Exactly, yes. So the intention would be to, if we get the grant, uh, then we would probably, we would go out to bid again. Uh, to, on the remaining piece of the work.
Right, okay, that's, thank you for the clarification.
Can I, I, I didn't have a chance to look this up in the minutes, but was, did the procurement committee review this and sign off on this?
Not yet, uh, because the timing will have to have the procurement committee, so you might need to amend your motion to say pending approval by the procurement committee.
I think you're correct, yes. Good catch, Marty.
Thank you.
So we, um, I'd like to amend the motion. So the motion is to award the, the bid price of $484,400 to half a group. Who is the lowest bidder and subject to the approval of the. About a second?
Second.
Yeah, I think.
You just amended.
Yeah, yeah, you either have to second one. Yeah.
Second.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion?
Where are we taking the money from this?
Uh, this is the ARPA slash SIR funds, correct, Jen?
Yes, so the Board of Ed is paying for this.
This was that first group of money that the Board of Ed had, and then we added ARCA funds to it for 1.1 million. Yeah, around that, we had 855 that, but Jen, this is all S or the ER2, right?
Yes.
But this is all the Board of Ed money, which needs to be spent first before the ARPA anyway.
So.
Yes.
And just, I mean, we're talking about a major project here for the schools, I just want to make sure. Please explain how. One bit it comes in at 484, and the other one comes in at nine something for the same equipment. It just, you know, that's, that's quite a difference in bid.
Uh, well, we were very uncomfortable with the higher bid from Bay's management, uh, because of that. So we had, uh, so, uh, when we were in the design phase, Kohler Ronan had done a cost estimate for us on this unit. Which was closer to the Kafa Group bid, and then we also had STV do, uh, a second cost estimate. And so the final cost estimate that we brought forward with our, um. Funding request was the STV cost estimate, which was, uh, slightly more than what Kafa Group came in as. Uh, so we, we did have concerns about what was in the base management bid, especially for this, um, this piece of equipment. Uh, they had a lot of carpentry work in their bid, um, that just really wasn't making sense to us.
Is it the same unit?
Yes.
The bid was based on a specific unit, so it was. Unit side by side. Correct?
Yes, we gave them the specification, very specific specifications, because what we want to do is have something that will fit in the same space. As our old air handler. As our old air handler and also meet the HVAC needs.
But you, you didn't, you didn't specify the brand or the make, you just specified what you wanted it to do.
Yes, correct.
And, well, Cole Roland specified the brand were equal. And they looked at Coffin's group, and they felt very comfortable with all the equipment and everything like that?
Yes.
Jen, how, remind me, how long ago is this big, cause I know Public Works had it for a while, reviewing everything and checking.
Yeah, these came in on January twenty-third. Yeah, and I, I think I misspoke before when I said that the board piece of the money would cover all of this, when I, um. We, this does come out of the one point five nine five that we have allocated, it's the combination of the board funding and what the Board of Selectmen already allocated.
My main concern is, is what's the other company saying that the other one's not? You know, cause if you look at the rest of their prices, like Richie said, they were actually lower.
Yeah, if we did all the alternates, they would have been.
Alternate one was lower alternate, so. You know. Is CAF a group gonna come in and then go, oh, well, we do have all this framing to do, we do have all this to do, and we're not prepared for that. I just feel like, you know, I wish I knew a little bit more.
Well, they're, they're not, they're not gonna do any of the alternates, so why do in the.
No, I know, but, but.
Concern, they're missing something.
They're missing something that another company saw, because it's just such a huge discrepancy in bids. And the alternates are lower. I mean, this company was lower on everything, and then they come in twice as much as Coffin's. So I just, you know, I just wanna make sure that we're not proceeding in the wrong direction.
Jen, on the alternate bids, they, they were separate projects that were added on to this, correct?
The alternate bids are to add air conditioning to the nineteen seventy-five portion of the basement of the, sorry. Of the building that, uh, have never had air conditioning before, um, so that's, um, alternates one, uh, hold on, let me.
So, so basically, they were all separate projects, they weren't.
Yes, yes, so. Right, cause at one point we thought maybe we could, uh, we had a lower cost estimate before we started putting in some of the, uh, escalations costs. We're seeing in the market right now, um, so we, at one point, we were hoping that we could do all of this with our approximately one point five million that's already been allocated. But, but now we know we can't.
Say that alternates one through four had no relationship to the, uh, base bid of, uh, ERU two?
Yes, so we, yes, exactly. Um, the, the only thing that connects them is that they're all at the high school.
How, how many companies actually bid on this?
Uh, just these two, uh, and actually, we, we went to bid twice, the first time we went out to bid, we got zero bids. Um, so we got some feedback and our original language in the bid had said a mechanical contractor. And we took that out to just say contractor, so that we could, um, get bids from general contractors, and we only received these two. And we did, um, uh, ask some additional questions and got more, a more detailed cost breakdown. From both, uh, base management and the CAF a group, so I could share those with you if, if, if you'd like to see them.
Then when the, when the team looked at it, I mean, I noticed looking at the scoring, um, that they hadn't had much with respect to this school HVAC. Or, or, or with project upgrades, was that?
Yes, the majority of their experience was con carpentry work, and they were going to use a subcontractor for the HVAC work. So for example, the references they provided, um, only one of their references mentioned HVAC work for base management. And when Bob Germanero called them, so when he called them, then the person actually said they didn't do any HVAC for us. So, um, so we were a little concerned about their references, um, and be- because they didn't include base. It just didn't include a lot of HVAC work, um, we do understand that their subcontractor is experienced, uh, but. You know, overall with the huge difference in the price and the fact that they hadn't actually been a general contractor for this type of. HVAC work before made us a little nervous.
Uh, when I was in the selectmen's office, I saw that, no, that they didn't have much experience as. They were doing, uh, painting and carpentry work primarily, and then like you said, they have some students, some mechanical work. There's two markups on it that do.
Do they ever do a performance bond on this sort of?
I don't know for sure if we required on this one, I know we have in the past. Jen, do you know if this one contained a performance bond that I've got?
The overall bid, including the alternates, had a performance bond, but I'd have to double check if it applies to just ERU two. Um, but it wa- but it was in the bid wording.
I think it did, um, I'm trying to recall, I looked at this last week, the bid, and I, and I think it did, but. We can always insist that it go in there anyway, I don't care what the bid says. We should always have a performance bond, especially when you're talking this kind of money. You talk twenty or thirty thousand dollars, another story, but something like this, you should have a performance bond, there's no doubt, no doubt about it. And the other thing I wanted to say too, when I reviewed the bid last week, uh, and I spoke to Sam Flynn, who's our purchasing agent. I told him that the bid was very confusing with the alternates and the base, and that when they redo it, if they're gonna redo it in any way, shape or form. They need to make it very clear what's an alternate, what's a base, don't put them on the same page, cause people think. That they're bidding on everything at once, especially the inexperienced, and I think that, that to Brian's point, I think. The reason why that one company is so off is because they are inexperienced, and they're not used to bidding projects like this.
But what happened to that company? Remember, we did one of the projects where it was a municipal, like consortium, where they had all tons of contractors that.
Yeah, it was, the, well, you, that's what's being done, the municipal project in the front of the building there, uh.
People that could do this?
AMP, I don't know, you probably could, you could send it, I forget the name of the initial. Probably sent it out to look.
Yeah.
Especially the alternates, I think, because you've got so many of them, you may get a few that very, very much fit into the picture.
I, I'm just gonna be honest with you, I, I, I know what we're planning on doing, I understand that. But I really don't have a lot of materials or information, and I just feel like. You know, this is a big number we're talking about, and we only have one chance to get it right, and I don't want issues. You know.
I'm happy to share, so the RFP had over six hundred pages of specifications in it, and, um. I, I can share with you the two, the two full bid packages we received, as well as the additional questions they answered about the pricing details.
Jen, what's our, what's our timeframe on getting this approved?
Um, well, from the board perspective, we're hoping to do it as soon as possible, uh, but I do want you to be comfortable with the decision, so, uh, we would. Ideally, we want to order the equipment, so that, and we know there's a, a lead time for any type of air handler like this. Um, so ideally, we'd like to install in the summer, uh, but if you guys need, you know, some extra time to go through all the documents, I, I think that's reasonable.
If we were pushing this to March seventh, would that be a big hang up for you guys?
Well, you do have a special meeting Monday night.
Yeah, I, I would feel more comfortable with Monday, if you don't mind, because, um, we know some of these air handlers are taking, um, a long time to come in.
Right, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, but if there was any doubt, I think we should consider that.
I listen, I'd just like to hear, you know, maybe from the building site committee, or, you know, I mean, we put these people. In charge of these projects for a reason, and, you know. Me to sit here and just say, and again, I won't be upset, if you guys wanna go through with it, I could abstain from the vote, I won't be upset at it at all.
Yeah.
I just, uh, you know, I just don't feel comfortable based on some of Bethel's past projects that didn't go so well.
Earlier, the Eric was here, public works director, James was on Zoom, who did a lot of this work. I think it makes sense that if you do it on the twentieth or the seventh. Have them come back, cause they went through the bit.
Yeah, I think that, that would be helpful if Eric. Came back and gave, and not that, like, it has nothing to do with you guys, Jen, it's just, I just wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing and. You know, understanding the bids and why it happened that way.
We employ engineers, if you have questions, let's have our engineers here to answer the question.
So, did, did, um, uh. The engineer, I can't think the name right this second, right here.
James, Damao?
No, the other, no, the.
Oh, Cole Ronan?
Yeah, did they review this?
Uh, they have reviewed it, um, and their take was that the, uh, bid from base management for ERU two was, was way out of line.
Because their, their cost estimate was more in line with the other people.
Yes, yes.
But I, I don't have a problem voting on it, but, uh, we could, it's only a week, we could table to next week to have, uh. Eric and James talk about it.
Cause Jen, you can even request Craig from Cole Ronan on. The hybrid piece of it, if the board is available, say six thirty that night. I know, it's turned down five hours right now, I mean, yes.
Yeah, I can be there.
Okay, so, so I'm, I'm happy to withdraw my motion. And then, um, it's up to you, Brian, do you wanna do?
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we invite, uh. Our town engineer, uh, at the Cole or Roland to our next meeting, especially if they're available, just to discuss. The project, so we know what we're voting on, and Jen, if you guys have anything, you can email us, that would be great.
Yes, absolutely, I'll send it out.
Marty, you check on the, uh, performance bond, please?
Yes, perfect. So, um, so actually, Rich started the first motion, uh, motion to table till March seventh. I'll second that, I'm sorry, February twenty. Yeah, so let's just, so.
Give us time or no?
Well, you only have your one night, maybe we should do four thirty.
We're gonna table till March twenty-seven. So I'm gonna make that second.
Yeah.
All in favor of tabling to February twenty-seventh? All in favor?
I.
I.
But we gotta post the agenda, but.
Yeah, she's on it right there.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, motion passes, okay, so that is gonna lay on the table, um. Okay, there's really just the two things, is he ready, cause otherwise we can run through the next thing real quick.
Why don't you start a quarry now, man?
Okay, so let's just. Okay, so, um, uh, I make a motion that we accept the aquarium land donation. I don't know how to refer to it, of the, the property name. But it's the land donation in front of you. Now, my understanding is, uh, aquarium can no longer use this land, um, if you take a look at, uh, where it sits. Uh, I think it benefits us just to, you know, accept it, well, I think we'll have to decide what we do with it later.
So stupid, you can't.
Yeah.
Yes, Marty.
I, I just wanted to say, if you look at the deed that I sent over.
Yep.
It says, by acceptance of this deed, grantee here, grantee hereby agrees. That the property shall be used solely for open space or recreational purposes, as defined in Connecticut general statute so and so. And I'll tell you, so you're aware of what it means, so it says for open space and recreational purposes means use of lands. For agriculture, parks, natural areas, forest, camping, fishing, wetlands, preservation, wildlife habitat. Reservoirs, hunting, golfing, boating, swimming and hiking, so there's a lot of things you can use it for. I don't, I don't think for where it's situated, you're gonna use it for much other than open space, so to speak, but.
Right. Somebody, when we, when we accept it, uh, do we have to say what it's gonna be, I mean, it's automatically the deed anyway, so we just.
Oh, it's, 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 it's an automatic deed, you're sure, so, and, but what I would like is, and I know you're in the middle of motion. I've never done a title search, I don't wanna, I, I waited till we got this, because this turned down by pure the first time around. So that's why I waited, but I, I'd like you to make a motion to allow me to do a title search, just to make sure we're not getting a pig in a polk.
Yeah, so let's, why don't we do that, why don't we throw the motion, and, um, we'll motion the table, give, uh. And in, I guess in that motion, we will allow Marty to, the town attorney to do a title search on the property. Any second? All in favor?
Has Aquarian given us a time limit, Marty, or they're being reasonable?
No, they've been, given us a time limit, you know how long we've been dealing with this? Two and a half years. Taken to get them to this point, yeah, unbelievable. So I, I don't think, I, I can contact them and say, basically, we're in agreement, we just wanna do, run, do the final title search, and that'll be it, and we'll be all set.
Uh, Marty, the, uh, I just have one question. You said about hunting on the property, can we take hunting out of that?
Well, I think you can, I, I think that, um. I don't think you have to do all those things, I think what it, what it is, is that, that's what they will allow you to do under the statute. Okay, so what you can do is, what you may wanna do is, and it's been done, I think, for the front preserve, and I don't know what other ones. But I think you can always, at any point, say that, you know, the open space is gonna be restricted to X, Y and Z. I don't think you have to do that now.
Okay.
So there's a motion on the floor to allow Marty to do a title search and lay this on the table?
Yes.
All in favor?
I.
I oppose, seeing none, motion carries. And, um, for those on the, uh, on the TV, if you don't have very much left on Zoom there, um, we are going to be going in executive session. To, uh, talk about the ratification of the Department of Public Works Union contract. So with that, uh, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. Okay, so we'll say Richie made a motion.
Oh, okay, so, as part of the motion, do you have to invite in?
Oh, yeah, well, we're, yeah, so let's, let's do that, so, um, I'll invite in, um, Mary Churchill. And I'll invite in John Shay.
Yep.
And you're the second one to invite you in, or you want? Okay, well, and then the motion will invite in Brad, uh, Herring.
Marty or?
And, uh, we'll invite in Marty Waller. And it's it, right, um, with the amended motion, um, all in favor? Oppose?
Great.
So we're in executive session, um, so Mary, you can, uh, bring everybody back. Then when we do the motion there, Brad, um, is the proper term to accept the contract?
Ratify.
Ratify, ratifies appropriately, okay. Okay, so we're, we're back in from executive session, um. I'd like to make a motion that we ratify the tentative agreement with Ask Me Council Local Four, local thirteen oh three, one eighty-eight. To Bethel Department of Public Works employees. May I have a second? Uh, any more discussion? Seeing none, um, may I have a vote, all in favor? I oppose, often the motion carries, uh, with that. Thank you, Marty.